Thank you. Will you please rise and join me with the pledge?
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and I think it is time for our student representatives' report. Who's going first?
I'm gonna go first. So, a little bit on the sports. All winter captains were able to attend a leadership conference through the SCC, which is the league we play most of our sports through, and the purpose of this leadership conference was to help develop and nurture good leadership skills within the peers on the team. All winter sports are moving on to league and state playoffs starting next week, and they all have qualified or will compete in postseason play, which is great. Some teams, boys basketball, won a shared portion of the division title for their division, and boys hockey is playing for a division championship beginning next week. So those are some things to look out for.
Otherwise, the peer health educators participated in the Penguin Plunge at the lake on the Farmington Trail on February 10th, and they raised $3,300 for Best Buddies and the Special Olympics. Course selection is currently running for eighth graders and underclassmen at the high school. The CHS library has been running an informational program for Black History Month in which a student acts as a certain African-American historical figure and answers student questions after school. They wear these special shirts that are designed by students in a graphic design class to indicate who they're representing. Senator Blumenthal visited the school yesterday to answer questions. These questions were selected based on submissions by juniors in the civics and AP Gov. classes and then posed by the officers of the political clubs at the school, the Young Republicans and the Young Democrats. The next Cheshire Chat is on Monday, and it will include the first discussion on this year's B1 Day. And perhaps most importantly, NIASC is coming up March 3rd through 6th. The opening presentation will be on Sunday, March 3rd, and the administration has asked that all board members please attend. It begins at 1:00 with a panel in the auditorium, and at 2:10, there will be a welcome reception in the commons. As I understand it, many student representatives from different clubs and organizations will be attending as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for our student representatives? Anything? Yes, Ms. Sobel.
I just have a quick question. For Black History Month in February, did people dress up as a different person every day, or was it one person a week? How did that work?
It was a different student was chosen, and they didn't dress up as the person. They wore the shirt.
I meant the t-shirt.
Yeah, they put on the shirt, and it was a different student every day with a different t-shirt, based on who they were acting. Yeah, it was super cool. And it's still going on. So that's awesome.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And now the exciting part of the meeting this evening. Superintendent Solon, would you like to introduce our group?
Mr. Solomon, if you want to help me with the screen, please. Yeah, if you guys would like to come around. It's not a crazy question, because they can see it from the other side of the screen. Yeah, it's projected on both sides, but... Thank you, Mike. And thank you, Madam Chair. This presentation has almost literally been a year in the making, and I really need to thank all of our folks who served on the Personalized Learning Task Force, many of whom are in attendance this evening, who spent the better part of a year reading, reviewing, feedback, engaging in deep conversation with each other, pushing each other, listening to a lot of our student participants who served on this task force, who provided really rich feedback for us about what their experience is like as a middle school or high school student. And over the course of that year, we worked to create, to this point, a vision of the graduate and what our performance standards. We took a look at the existing performance standards and tried to consider how those could be updated and improved. And so, I appreciate everyone's attention this evening as I pass it off to the members of our committee, who I know will so eloquently express the work that we did, why we did it, and help you get a better understanding for the presentation and what we're moving forward tonight. So, my pleasure to welcome Nicolena Gersi, who's going to come up and kick us off.
Thank you. So, tonight, we are here to kind of let you guys know what the members have been doing, what we've been working towards, starting at where we set our goals, and then how we set up a system to achieve our goals in the future. The task force was made up of everyone involved in a student's education, which includes students, parents, administrators, educators, and then people who are involved in their education after high school, like college representatives. As a student, I felt like it was really important to be there to kind of let the other people know kind of what was happening and how things, how this could apply, or how it could better the system, because there's a lot of, everyone here kind of works together in understanding each perspective can really optimize the results. Why are we doing this? Why are we evolving? Because the world evolves, and my education is going to be different than my younger brother's education, or my even younger cousin's education, as it was different to my parents' education, because there's different tools available and different ways to manipulate the knowledge and who's, how things are being acquired. Cheshire has so many strong components, and so finding the right way to put them all together is really going to optimize the results and get the most out of what we already have. But, I mean, in retrospect, I'm kind of done with my education here in Cheshire as a junior, so we're really looking towards what graduates are going to look like in the future.
And right there is an example of why this is so important. Our students have been really an inspiration to us on the committee, and I just have to say thank you, first of all, to all of you, all of us who participated on the committee, and working with our kids, hearing from our parents, working with colleagues, working with other, with teachers, with administrators. It's really been a very profound process for us, and a very intense and a very involved process. And so, one of the first things we completed was a vision of the graduate. So, why start with a vision of the graduate? Well, this is kind of a holistic, broad statement about what we expect our students to know and be able to do. And I just want to give a little bit of background. The New England Association of Schools and Colleges, which I am deeply, with which I am deeply acquainted over these past few months, our accreditation visit is this, is not far off, it's March 3rd through the 6th. They provide us with seven standards that we need to evaluate all of our practices around, from our core values and beliefs to our community resources for learning. And core values and beliefs really do depend on what do we believe about learning, and what do we want our students to know and be able to do when they graduate. So, we wanted to come up with a broad statement that is kind of a 30,000-foot view of where we want to see our students arrive upon their graduation. And we pulled out five central concepts and made that part of our vision of the graduate. And we took those concepts from our existing Cheshire Performance Standards. Cheshire Performance Standards have been around for a long time, and one of our members will be talking about those shortly, but they were developed with a number of teachers, and our high school folks have maintained a committee that regularly reviews the Cheshire Performance Standards and thinks about how we evaluate them. And at that, in that committee, we started talking about, we need something a little bit broader to help us envision where we want our students to go. So, we started working on a vision and then brought that to the committee. So, that was a wonderful process for us, that the high school had some input, then the committee tossed the ideas around, and we developed this vision. And the five concepts that are, that are part of that is developing lifelong learners who can really adapt in a changing society. We want to be sure that our students aren't just academically successful, but also emotionally and socially successful. It's so vital that we have students who can think in a complex way, who can be imaginative, who can have rich and original ideas, who know what they know, but also understand how to manipulate and think through ideas and make connections. And we want students, that ties to the fourth bullet, to be adept at applying skills across disciplines, but also in real-world contexts. What are you learning, but what does it mean? What might you do with it beyond your high school experience? And then finally, taking a broad view of how our students will influence the society in which they're going to be involved. How are they going to be learners in a new community in college? And how will they invest and make a difference in our global society? So, that was the basis for our vision, and we, a subcommittee worked together to develop that, and then we got input from all, every single school, teachers, students, parents, the community. And then we took all of that feedback from those several iterations that we did to develop this one. And the three kind of large buckets, as we go from a very broad vision of the graduate to something a little bit more specific, we wanted to isolate the qualities that were important and that characterize a student as a thinker and learner, so who they are, then broaden that out to who are you as you work with others? What kind of learner are you? How do you collaborate with others? And then finally, how do you contribute to the larger community, to the world around you? And so, this was the basis for our development of the vision of the graduate. And again, it was based on our Cheshire Performance Standards, and I didn't introduce myself. I knew I would do this. I'm Mary Gad. I'm the principal at the high school. Thank you all for being here. And Dave?
Thank you. Good evening. I'm David Farrarum, a parent of a DOD and high school student. So, naturally, as we made some changes to the vision of the graduate, it makes sense to adjust the performance standards, the measures by which we measure our students' performance on their path to graduation. And so, we started with the original standard, which was created in 2004, and, you know, that's 14, 15 years past. The world has changed since then. We're, it's a different place now. Education is different. Our students are different. The needs in the workplace are different. And so, the task force started with literature and research on current-day skill sets that employers are looking for, current-day skill sets that will help people thrive in this world today. And one of the overarching themes that we came across was the concept of creativity, being a creative thinker. And so, you can see in the 2019 version, we've given that its own heading, because we thought it was, it was so important, okay? One of the other common areas of focus in education throughout the country is the concept of social and emotional learning. And it's vital in education, it's vital in our lives. And, and so, we didn't give that its own heading in the 2019 version. Rather, we folded that concept into all of the headings throughout the 2019 version. If you look at the 2004 version, it seems like two of those headings have been eliminated. That's really not the case. We, we went through the whole 2004 version. We wanted it to be a little more succinct. We wanted to eliminate some redundancy and some overlap, and those two areas that you don't see headings for in the 2019 version have been folded into the various headings that are there. So, we didn't lose any of that content. We simply kind of meshed it into the new standards that we have. So, I want to highlight that this is, this was not a complete overhaul. We didn't take the 2004 version and throw it away and start from scratch. In fact, the 2019 version, many of the bullets and headings in the 2019 version were largely unchanged, or changed slightly in the 2019 version. So, we added some aspects. We folded in some of the older aspects, and we, you know, tried to make it as succinct and as clear as possible. So, the draft was created, and the draft was, we solicited feedback from teachers, students, the community at large, parents, the administration, and, you know, we, we took those comments back, and we looked at what they were saying. We implemented many of the comments and feedback we received, and that's the 2019 version that you see today. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ellen Groenwald. I am a parent of four. My oldest is in the middle school. I have two in Doolittle, and one who will be entering Darcy as a kindergartner next year. So, we spent a lot of time, oh, how do I, I want to advance, right? Okay, sorry. We spent a lot of time, after we talked about the performance standards and the vision of the graduate, really thinking about the myth of average before we got into exactly what personalized learning is. And the reason we did that is we felt like that was really the theory behind where we were going. We talked about Dr. Todd Rose, and we watched a great presentation that he did, where he talked about, the Air Force studied fighter pilots and discovered that poor performance was actually related to the fact that cockpits in fighter jets were designed to the average size of a fighter pilot. But then they looked at their pilots, and none of the pilots were exactly average-sized in every way. And I just have to say, as a short aside, this really hit home with me, and I think it's ironic coincidence that you asked me to present this slide, because my dad, believe it or not, was a fighter jet pilot in the Air Force. And he was six foot three, 170 pounds, so probably not average, I would say. And I never thought to ask him if he spent a lot of hours feeling really squished, or, but one time, I do remember us getting a rental car, and it was a Ford Fiesta, and just seeing like how small he was in there. And like, so we want our kids, how does this apply to what we're doing, right? We want our kids to be able to perform to the level of flying a fighter jet, right? We don't want them squished in a Fiesta. So, this was a great presentation. What we got from it was, we want it designed to the edges, right? So, we don't want to design to the average student. We want to be able to meet the various needs of students with their performance, their needs, their interests, so that we can really engage everyone. I think it was about engagement and maximizing the potential of each kid. I know when I think about my kids, they will be graduates from the class of 2024 until 2032, and how much the world will change between then and now, and also how different they are than each other, and how much they will change over time. I think we're really thinking about, and what we got as a group from this information was that we need to be adaptable, and as a school district, it's our goal. If we want to get those students to that vision of the graduate and to meet those performance standards, we really want to be able to adapt and design to the edges so that we can effectively engage each student to their greatest potential.
Hello, my name is Lucy Helene, and I am a sophomore at Cheshire High School. And so, you're probably all sitting here wondering why we need this definition of personalized learning, and it really comes down to that it is such a broad subject matter, and when everyone thinks of personalized learning, they think of something different. And so, if everyone has a common understanding, and if everyone's on the same page, then that will really benefit our students, because then we can establish this vision and implement that into our teaching methods and practices. We talked about different teaching styles and how everyone needs to tune in to their students' strengths and weaknesses. One student might need one-on-one instruction if they don't work well in large groups. Another student might be, work well on the computer, and they're independent. Another example is, we had a teacher come in and tell us that, for one student, they needed everything dinosaurs, math word problems dinosaurs, and stories about dinosaurs, because that's what kept them interested in learning. So, all in all, this definition is so important, because learning for our students is the most engaging and exciting when it follows this definition, and our teachers are striving to maintain it. Thank you.
I'm Deborah Manke, and I'm a teacher who was lucky enough to work on this committee. And so, as Lucy said, the definition, when we hear personalized learning, is very broad. And so, our task was really to come together and create a common definition that belonged to us, and that would lead to a common understanding for what we wanted personalized learning to mean in Cheshire Public Schools. So, we worked together. We collaborated a lot. It was not an easy task, but it was a task that many people pitched in on for many hours with a lot of discussion, and many different perspectives were presented. And in the end, this is the definition of personalized learning. I'm just going to read it. This was our definition of personalized learning. "The Cheshire Public School definition of personalized learning recognizes that there are many ways for students to become lifelong learners who can adapt in a rapidly changing society. In a personalized learning environment, students and teachers partner to explore and develop a range of strategies for learning tailored to each student's individual strengths, needs, pace, and interests. Together, students and teachers collectively evaluate progress in mastery of concepts, skills, and applicable standards. Personalized learning encourages student voice and choice regarding how students learn in relation to a standard-based curriculum." So, what are the highlights of our definition? The first highlight that we want to make sure that everyone understands is that there is a partnership between the teacher and the student, and that partnership is put together so we can develop a range of strategies. And we want those strategies to meet the strengths and the needs of the student, and those strengths and needs revolve around a lot of things, including their pace and their interests. We also, students and teachers want to work together collaboratively, because of course it's important in the end that students master the concepts and the skills and the standards that are expected of Cheshire Public School students. Other characteristics are that the student and teacher have a relationship together, that there is a collaborative partnership, and that while it starts with the student and teacher in school, that the parent, and really the community, are involved, and that instruction takes place in many different forms. So, it's important to understand that direct instruction still happens, that collaborative work is, is part of what we do, research projects, I think outside-school experiences, field trips are all part of what we want our definition of personalized learning to be. Other characteristics are to make sure that the learner, since they're ones that are doing the learning, that their strengths and needs and their perspective and interests are respected, that feedback is presented often and accurately, so the students and the learners understand how they can grow and what they need to do to grow, that student voice is important, since they're the, they are the product of the learning, and that assessment is going to demonstrate the mastery of skills and concepts. We also wanted to make sure that everyone understood what personalized learning was not. So, these are the things that personalized learning is not. It's important for everyone to understand that it is not a specific program or platform, not, it is not solely achievable through technology, that not every student has an individual curriculum. It is not easier for teachers, and it's not a way for, to reduce the number of teachers that are going to be, that are going to be staffed, that students aren't expected to just learn information on their own. The teachers are there. That's our job. We're there to support the students. And it's not an absence of learning standards. The learning standards that we've set forth for our students, we're expecting them to learn.
So, you know, I appreciate these guys, not only all the time that they spent over the course of the last year, working through to, to develop this point, to get us to this point, but there is a little bit more yet to be done. This was a critical step for us, to be able to identify where we were going and what that would look like. We still have work to do, and we've been doing the work, we're just not finalized yet with respect to recommendations for, for implementation, and that should be, that'll be the focus of our next meeting, and then we'll have another community input process for that as well. But, this was a critical foundation for us to come to an agreed-upon definition, and there were a lot of diverse perspectives in the room when we went through this process intentionally. And I think the, the real value came in that diversity, in challenging each other's thinking around different things, and certainly, as I said initially, the feedback of our students. Incredibly valuable in the process to give us that perspective as well, what it's like to be a learner in our schools. And Lucy was talking about, you know, why that definition is important. And, you know, I think what really struck me and many of our task force members was when she said, you know, looking at our definition and looking at the things that we had outlined for what personalized learning would be, she said to the group, this, like, these are the classes that mean the most to me. When these things are happening, this is the most powerful for me. And that's why it's really important for us to establish this, and to be able to have a common understanding of when we talk about personalized learning, what is that? And so that, that can be communicated with our faculty and staff and community and students, so that we all have that common expectation and definition. So, again, I really appreciate all the work and the time put in by our committee. I know that we provided the board with a copy of the definitions. All of that will be available on our website first thing tomorrow. If you go on to our website, there is a section for the Personalized Learning Task Force. The Todd Rose video is there, the meeting agendas, everything that we've done. agendas, everything that we've done over the course of the year is there, and you can see that information. And tomorrow, this presentation and that information will be there as well. So, I don't know if any of the members of the board, you know, have any questions at this point, but we are, you know, as I said, going to work on the recommendations to be, you know, shared with the community and then the board. And the next steps would be to initiate a plan to scale up our practices around the district. These aren't necessarily new things that we're doing. It's just, how do we start slowly trying to look at, how do we, as Ellen said, design to the edges a little bit better? And how do we meet students' needs? And then obviously, we'll have a new assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction, and allow them, you know, to be part of that process, or ask them to support the process of working with our teachers and community. So, Nita?
So I just thought, is the board going to be voting on the definition, or what's the board's role?
Yeah, I think the board, not tonight, but at our next business meeting, would adopt the definition. If you have questions between now and then our committee meets again, I would ask, you know, either you or the community to send them to me, and we can certainly, you know, talk about that. But certainly the definition and the performance standards would be, you know, moving forward with the board.
Is there a question I can ask now?
Sure.
Not answering now, but...
Okay.
Basically, because I think this is going to be for K through 12, right?
Correct, yeah.
So I was wondering, like, I was reimbursed, thank you to the committee, and thank you for all your hard work, I really appreciate it. When I was looking at the definition, I was wondering about, the last sentence that said, "Encourage student voice and choice regarding how students learn in relation to standard-based curriculum." And I was wondering, is that practical in every single subject and class? Like, I'm thinking about the high school...
Yeah, it's where it would be developmentally appropriate. And, you know, allowing a student, when it's an opportunity to work in groups, to go to stations, you know, there may be two different choices for a story that we're going to read at an early elementary level. And you might have some choice there in what you're working on. At the high school, it could mean something completely different than that. So it's developmentally appropriate for our students. It wouldn't be just open-ended. It's focused on content standards, and it's developmentally appropriate. We provide choice now for students across all grade levels in a developmentally appropriate manner. Anne?
I don't have a question. I just really want to thank this group for, I read Perouse's this very carefully earlier today, and this is just a very well put-together document. And the amount of work that I know that you all did is really evident in here. And I just want to point out some of the language on page five that maybe gets to what my colleague, Nita, was asking. The last line says, "Student choice is not free choice. A key to effective choice is teacher guidance based on knowledge of the student." And so I think that speaks to, the process involves the student. The student's heard and considered, but it's not the same thing as saying that the student runs their own education.
Yeah, definitely not.
Because there are other factors involved.
That's clear.
I think this, this puts together a real focus, and as Superintendent Solen said, we'll be able to, I'm sorry if my back hits somebody, we'll be able to use this document not only for board members to have this information, but when we hire new personnel, and we are going to be in the process, not that Dawn isn't doing a great job sitting in, but we are hiring a new assistant superintendent. And just to be able to start from, all of us coming from a place, a similar place, to exactly the same place and moving forward from there, it's just good to have this information. So, thank you, thank you from a lot of my heart. This is good stuff. Thank you. And especially those students. Wow. Was it just the two of you or were there other?
Yeah, our kids have pretty busy schedules, and we had a number of middle and high school students dedicate a lot of time to this, and it's really definitely appreciated. Mr. Grippo?
I wasn't sure if I was having an opportunity to say this on microphone, so I guess I'll be saying this to you all. As you know, I've attended probably three or four of your meetings. I started out as some strange guy with that, not sure I know what it was. And, you know, I've been there for those three-hour sessions that you guys do at least once a month. And, you know, I know you put a lot of hard work into this, and I know that the board will give full consideration into the full detail that you guys have put together.
So I thank you for that great job that you've done.
Thanks, Adam. Tony?
No, no, seriously, I was going to address the microphone. So, thank you as well from about my heart, all the volunteers in this, because while it's not the meetings and it was intentional, I tend not to try to influence committees, especially in a first group like this, because the board of ed is my thoughts, sometimes it buys view of things. So I want to make sure you guys worked in the penance you deserve. But it's so awesome to see such a cross-section of stakeholders and, you know, the students. Sometimes, you know, we don't realize we're making decisions that directly affect the students, although we realize that, but, you know, not to say we don't take your thoughts into consideration. But I thought this was a great avenue where you were involved, you gave the presentation, and you're being heard. So I think that's awesome. So, thank you. As Adam noted, we have been looking through the details for a while now. We have been keeping abreast of all the activities, the videos, the meetings, the minutes. There's plenty of information out there on our public website. And as Adam noted, you certainly have mine, I'm sure rest of the board's attention, and we'll go through this very seriously and hopefully adopt it. And I, for one, looking forward to all the other work you may be doing on this. Now, we can do more work, but there's more to do. And I think if this group operates as effectively as it has, I think we'll have some pretty good outcomes with this. So, thank you again.
Again, thank you, everybody, for coming, and certainly for our personalized task force and all the work that you've done. Thank you very much, guys.
So, thank you. I'm going to take advantage of the microphone and add my thanks to all the great work that the task force did. I think it is incredible, the amount of processing of information and the way that you were able to synthesize so many different perspectives and come up with, I mean, I'm just, it's so impressive, and it really is going to help us. Once we get this adopted, really all move into a direction that everybody can buy into. And I just, again, thank you for all the work that you did, just hours and hours. So, you know, we all appreciate it. Thanks. Okay, moving on to the boring stuff. Ms. Sobel, do you have a motion for me?
I do. I move that the Cheshire Board of Education approve the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held January 17th, 2019.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Ms. Harrigan, is there any discussion, corrections, anything? No? So, the motion is that the Board of Education, Cheshire Board of Ed, approve the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held January 17th, 2019. All in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. And do you have another motion for me?
I do.
Okay.
I move that the Cheshire Board of Education approve the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held January 24th, 2019.
Thank you. Second, Ms. Harrigan. Any comments, corrections, questions? No? Okay. So, the motion is that the Cheshire Board of Education approve the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held January 24th, 2019. All in favor? Also unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Perigini, is there any correspondence?
Ma'am Chair, I have no correspondence for this evening.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Solen, do you have a report for us?
I do. Thank you very much. A few items I wanted to touch upon this evening, and I know, you know, through the budget presentation, we talked about school security. So I thought it would be important to provide kind of an update of some of the things that we've been working on this year. And, you know, I know you've heard me talk before about the fact that we use really a multifaceted approach when we address school security, because there are many considerations with respect to that. And, you know, currently we're working with a FBI behavior analyst, and he shared a term with me that kind of helped put things in perspective around school security. And it was the idea of left-of-bang. It's really just the idea of a timeline, and I know I've shared that before in other meetings, where when you're looking to the left of an incident, you're looking at, how do we prevent things? What steps do we take to prepare? Right-of-bang, in this case, would be, how do we manage the situation if in the, we do experience an event? And some of the areas we focused on, you know, pre-incident, would include threat analysis. And last week, our school resource officers and almost every mental health professional and administrator in the district attended a full-day presentation on threat analysis at Cheshire High School, which was delivered by Dr. Melissa Reeves. She's the former president and the National Association of School Psychologists, a consultant with Sigma Threat Management Associates, and associate professor at Winthrop University. She provided updated professional development on threat analysis and intervention for our folks. Well, you know, we don't share every detail of the process. It was a full day and very thorough event. And our schools, you know, we continue to remind our students how seriously we take any student that, or statement, excuse me, that references a threat to our community regardless of the intent of that statement. But, you know, beyond that, we engage now in a very structured and methodical approach to examining any sort of threatening behavior. And that presentation was very beneficial for our team. And I think it was great because Tom Vivia is the retired FBI analyst that we've been working with, who's a Cheshire resident, and it aligned closely with everything that we've been working with Tom, too. So it just reinforced all the work that we've been doing so far this year. In terms of, you know, right of a critical incident, our multidisciplinary school district security team has been concentrating on reviewing our traditional lockdown protocols. Federal agencies have pretty much universally condemned the traditional lockdown method of shutting the door and hiding in a corner. And we've been exploring what agencies are recommending and why they're recommending that. So, you know, at the heart of those recommendations seems to be ensuring that people have options if there's an event. For example, we don't want students who are outside a school building and may hear gunfire inside that building, thinking that they must come in and find a room to hide in. And so in the coming months, our team of educators, firefighters, and law enforcement will provide an overview of what we've learned so far. And I think it's important that we engage in a community discussion about how do we make sure that our students and community is as safe as possible. So, those were a couple of critical school security pieces. I want to mention that over the past couple of weeks, we've been administering school climate surveys to students, parents, and staff. Our administrative team was very active in encouraging our parents to participate, and I really appreciate how our parents responded. And the last administration of the survey back in 2017, we had just about 200 parents complete this survey. To date, we've had more than 1,200 parent responses. And I really look forward to sharing those results with our community next month. Our school climate team, just so you know, will review the survey results from both the parent, student, and staff surveys from their buildings. We also have a district team that has the district perspective. And ultimately, the schools in the district create plans to provide a positive learning environment for our students, staff, and parents. Anything that we see in those surveys, we attempt to address the things that we think need improvement there. And finally, I gave a presentation, I think, you know, maybe mentioned from the curriculum meeting, that we, our district, has been engaged in learning walks pretty intensively over the last year. Our administrative team, in an effort to further our complex thinking goals, has been observing a lot of classroom instruction, and trying, you know, kind of like with personalized learning, to come to common definitions, characteristics of complex thinking in classrooms. And you can see it from preschool all the way up to high school. And it is really awesome to have high school teachers go into a pre-K classroom, or high school administrators go into a pre-K, take two, excuse me, pre-K classroom, and just be blown away with the complexity of the work that the kids are doing, and vice versa. It's really eye-opening. And so, last year, we had asked our teachers about, you know, what's your interest in participating in this? And there's incredible interest. And I know I've shared that at a board meeting as well, from our teachers. And Deb Manke is one of our teachers who will be beginning learning walks tomorrow. And tomorrow morning, I'll be at CHS, training our instructional leadership team, and what learning walks are all about, and how to do that. And so, we're excited to be continuing to move that practice forward. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Solen. Does anyone have any questions for the superintendent on the report? Mr. Grippo?
Not so much questions as comments. Firstly, I'm happy to hear that the lockdown procedures are being updated. I know, at least on a professional level, that the things that, at least where I work, the things that were taught and endorsed by the state police are not what we're currently teaching our children. So I'm glad that the school system is looking into updating those policies. Secondly, the school climate survey, I think your office has done an excellent job in getting that survey out to, I think, probably at least one parent of each student, because I don't know if we have all the emails. But I know that the survey itself, I know I took it, only takes about 10 minutes. 1,200 parents is great, but by my count, there would be at least, well, we'll say, at least over 4,000 parents, I think, that would have access to that survey. And so while that's better than last time, I hope that, I think there's a day or two left where the parents can take the survey. I would definitely encourage those who haven't to invest that 10 minutes to complete the survey for the school.
I had a question on the survey. It was posted on Cheshire Forum, I think, by a parent of a pre-K student. Are pre-K parents also sent out this survey? Or should they be getting a link for it, or?
No, I don't think we sent it to pre-K.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to committee reports. Ms. Harrigan, do you have a report from the curriculum committee?
Yes, I do. So I have a report for the Board of Education Curriculum Committee meeting on Monday, February 11th. We took care of a lot of business on the 11th, and I have a couple of motions for approval of the full board, which I will address at the end of my report. We talked about, for new business, Mr. Bronco, the World Language Department Chair, requested approval for a student trip to Spain in April of 2020. And he gave us a nice presentation about that trip, and the cost of the trip is estimated to be approximately 3,300 per student. And we will be seeking approval from the whole board on that trip, on that request. We had Tim Gavin of the History Department Chair at Cheshire High present us with some new textbook recommendations, and we also will be asking for approval of those, no, we will be putting those on display and asking for approval of textbooks that we talked about last month in the meeting that have been on display, public display now for 30 days or more. for 30 days or more. So the textbook recommendations from Monday's meeting were from the History Department, the AP US History course, which is basically a 10th grade course, and the AP Government course, which is predominantly an 11th grade course. We had an interesting discussion, because we talked about the differences of when we order, or when we approve, when the recommendation is for electronic texts, e-text versus hard copy text. These two texts were recommended to be bought in their hard copy version, the print version. But we do often order textbooks in their electronic format for various reasons. It was really interesting and good to see that our teachers and administrators go through quite a rigorous process when they're deciding on what kinds of materials to use in the classroom with their students, and it's based on a lot of different factors, but they're well-thought-out. And so this, I thought the discussion was really nice, and in, we had a public comment last month's board meeting about the use of electronic texts, and this particular commenter was concerned with the overuse of electronic texts, and I think this is a good place to make the point that we do carefully look at what we're ordering for texts, and we make the recommendations based on a lot of research and a lot of thought. And also, whenever we get the contracts for the e-text, we always have print copies also available of those texts, and so there's always the opportunity for a student to have a print copy of any electronic texts that we have. And I don't think that message was clearly put forth from the commenter that we had last month at the Board of Education Business Meeting. So I just wanted to bring that up, because it was very clear that our teachers and school personnel are putting a lot of thought into the materials that we're using in the classroom. We had another, moving on to some informational items, we had another presentation from Mr. Bronco, the World Language Department Chair at the high school. He spoke about the addition of German to the early college experience course to the program of studies at Cheshire High. And so, as is, as with other foreign language study that we do at Cheshire High, now we have added German, so students can take the course as a UConn early college credit and can earn credit for that, that can be transferred when they go to high, when they go to college. We had some conversation and just information on many out-of-state and overnight field trips, which I will not go through all of them tonight, but they are in the minutes. And as Mr. Solan reported, we got a report from Superintendent Solan on the district's learning walks and how this aligns to the Cheshire Public Schools' theory of action. And that presentation was well-received, at least from my perspective, so thank you for that. And we had a very brief discussion at the end of our meeting on the Common Core State Standards by Ms. Solano, our K-8 curriculum coordinator. She shared with us that the Common Core State Standards are a set of academic standards in English Language Arts and Math in kindergarten through 12th grade, and she gave us a little bit of the history of why we adhere to those standards. And with that, I would like to go forth and make my motions, and then take whatever questions anyone might have. So could we? Yeah, I got it. So the first motion is that the Cheshire Board of Education approve the purchase of the following textbooks: Modern Carpentry, 12th Edition; Architecture, Residential Drafting and Design, 12th Edition; and Principles of Marketing and Bring Science Alive for the elementary level.
Thank you, Ms. Harrigan. Do I have a second? Ms. Sobel? Any discussion or questions about that? These are textbooks that have been on display for at least a month, and so, if no one has any questions?
I was about to ask, are textbooks still there, just in case someone sees them being tonight and has a, just take a peek at them? Here's, I'm not sure if we take them off display in a certain date or, I'm sorry, Don, you're right here.
That's okay. The textbooks that are here, that are asking for approval this evening are off of display.
Okay.
They've been removed. We have them at the Board of Education. If anybody wanted to see them, we have copies for them. New textbooks that are mentioned in the minutes have gone out. They're at the library and the Board of Education building.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so, the motion before us is that the Cheshire Board of Education approve the purchase of the following textbooks: Modern Carpentry, 12th Edition; Architecture, Residential Drafting and Design, 12th Edition; Principles of Marketing, and Bring Science Alive. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
I just, I think maybe you might, can you just talk about the ones that have now been put on display? Or you did?
Yeah. Yeah, the ones that are on display now are The American Pageant and The American Government, which are for the AP government and the AP history courses at the high.
So just to confirm, those are the books that are on display now for the next month at the Board of Education office and at the library, for anybody who wants to go look at them and comment on them. Thank you. Sorry, go ahead.
No, that's okay. And the ones we just approved, we had discussed and put on display from last month's meeting. The second motion that I would ask for is that the Board of Education approve the participation of Cheshire High School students in the educational field trip to Spain from April 9th, 2020, to April 18th, 2020, with the understanding that there is no cost to the Cheshire Board of Education with those trips.
Thank you, Ms. Harrigan. Is there a second? Mr. Perugini? Any discussion, questions? No, seeing none. The motion before us is that the Cheshire Board of Education approve the participation of Cheshire High School students in the educational field trip to Spain from April 9th, 2020, to April 18th, 2020, with the understanding that there is no cost to the Cheshire Board of Education. All those in favor? It is unanimous, thank you. Is that your report?
That's all I have, unless anyone has questions.
Ms. Sobel, do you have a finance report for us?
I do, Madam Chair, thank you. This financial report is as of January 31st, 2019, and we are now one month past the midpoint of the 2018-19 fiscal year and are projecting to end the year in balance. As I reported last month and a couple of months before then, we're managing through variances in both our special education and maintenance accounts. For special education, we are reporting a continued net negative variance of about $250,000 as of January 31st, and that was, that was detailed, ah, sorry, and that was primarily attributable to unforeseen overages in the special education accounts for tuition outplacement and pupil services as well. We also, we are looking, thinking that we might exceed the budget with the maintenance lines, although the weather is not necessarily cooperating. One snowstorm.
A lot of ice.
I just want one. So we'll see how that progresses. And as a reminder, as a precautionary measure, and in order to ensure our ability to balance the budget, the budget over time and hiring freeze was instituted by Superintendent Solan on December 13th, 2018. That is still in place, in addition to the previously reported limitation in place for all schools and departments not to exceed more than 60% of their budget for non-payroll accounts. And unless anybody has any questions about those?
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Is it, do we do that as a matter of course, put the cap on the spending, or is it just when we see where?
Yeah, it's more of a read and respond situation with our budget. So knowing that we were facing substantial overages in the outplacement line, then we had to respond by putting that freeze in place, because as you heard Patrice McCarthy say, nobody wants to be personally, financially liable for that. So we do everything we can to make sure that doesn't happen.
Thank you.
We could just end school?
Just want to call a little detail, so, just for reference, I know we talked about this in the past, but accounts, 50, well, pupil services, tuition outplays combined has contributed a negative $525,000 projected deficit to our bottom line, which is pushing that other figure. So that means is, like we see almost every year, those lines are always, we're not sure what's going to happen there, but, so the point is, in addition to the freeze, the 60%, the administration is also managing through this unexpected increase in those costs through other areas in the budget. So hopefully, this will not change drafts between now and June, but we'll still keep an eye on it. Thank you.
Would you like to give the medical benefits update?
This month, I would be very happy to give the medical benefits report. The month of January, which begins the new HSA plan year, I know we've discussed this at the board before, so when we enter a new HSA plan year, employees have to meet their deductible 2,000 or 4,000, depending on if they're individual or family coverage. So this month's claims, as expected, were lower than December, which was over $1 million. In January, claims were 476,473, which is, I looked back, it is a five-year low for the month of January, which is good news. So as a result of that, we actually increased our medical benefits reserve balance this month by 261,000. So the ending balance in the reserve fund is 3.63 million as of January 31st, 2019. Again, we hope that we sustain this lower trend for the rest of the year, and I will note also that the budgeted number for monthly claims is 725,000, so being at 476,000, that's why we were able to increase the fund balance 261,000. So again, I'll keep it short, we hope it continues. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Sobel. Mr. Perugini, would you, do you have a report from the Personnel Committee?
Ma'am Chair, thank you. So Personnel Committee did meet on February 14th. We had one agenda topic, which was the process for the search for a new Assistant Superintendent of Schools. While we all appreciate and love Mr. Wellens being back, we know it's a short-term deal, and we definitely need to fill this role for the long term. So Mr. Solan walked the committee through essentially the processes, which is very similar to what went through in the past when we hired Sean Parkhurst, and I believe you're still finalizing a draft pamphlet that will go out to pretty much a wide net that will be cast as far as candidates that we'll be looking for in and around Connecticut. But we talked about what is in this Assistant Superintendent pamphlet, the qualifications, we're looking for dates of action in terms of when deadline for receipt of application material will be, when the Board of Ed will try to actually appoint, position start date. We talked about the vetting process of the candidates, stakeholders involved there, as well as the board's role in vetting the final two candidates, along with the superintendent and his team. And I believe one of the candidates, one of the stakeholders and one of the helpful people that will be involved is Mr. Scott Dietrich, who's our former Assistant Superintendent to help us weed through some of his candidates, I think worked pretty well last time as well. So I believe the position we posted, if hasn't already, when?
Should be posted any day.
Got it. And deadline for receipt of material starts about, is April 1st?
Early April.
Yep. There was no vote taken or action required at this point, but just happy to process underway, and we look forward to seeing those candidates. I'm sure that's all I have for that committee meeting.
Any questions from anyone? Okay, thank you, Mr. Perugini. Ms. Vadi, do you have a policy committee report?
I do, thank you. So the Policy Committee met on February 13th. We reviewed numerous policies for second and third reading, however, we did not move anything forward at that time. We had intended to do so at our February 20th meeting, which was postponed due to snow. So I have no policies to move forward today, and I'll do that at the next meeting.
Thank you. I will report on the Public Information Committee meeting, which we had on February 14th, and at that meeting, the committee heard a presentation by Mark Thomas, who's a communications specialist with Area Cooperative Educational Services. He is the individual, ACES was retained by the district to, you know, look at, you know, our needs in terms of developing a communications plan. He went through all of the work that he did and what we were trying to accomplish, and they have provided us with a communications plan recommendation, well, that provided it to the superintendent. The recommendations were made by a diverse group of community stakeholders. They received feedback, and I don't know, Jeff, if you want to add to this at all, but got over 1,000 responses to surveys that were sent out to the community, and it's, it will be presented to the full board at our next business meeting. So, right, is that one? But it's a good, I think it's a very good plan, and I don't know if you want to elaborate at all?
Sure, really quickly, I'd be happy to. Like our Personalized Learning Task Force, the steering group was comprised of a very diverse group, including one of our town council members, Ms. Nichols, who's in attendance this evening, Ms. Commune, one of our parents, who was in attendance until just recently. And so our group, again, had pretty diverse perspectives. Kelly Lenz did a tremendous job orchestrating that with ACES and provided a lot of tremendous guidance and support for the entire process. And so, you know, what we've put together, I think, is pretty comprehensive, and the goal is to improve two-way communications with the community and to help people get a better perspective on the amazing things that happen in our school system every single day. I know you hear it from our student representatives, you get a snapshot once every couple of weeks, but this will be a platform for providing more information in how to, if I live in the community as a parent or just a community member, how do I get questions about the school system answered? So we're pretty excited about it. Maybe I need to get out more often, but I'm excited about it.
Thank you, Superintendent Solan. Are there any other reports of any other standing committees? Seeing none. Are there any members of the audience that would like to address the Board of Education? Okay, seeing none. The chair has no old business. Does any other board member have any old business? Mr.? Mr. Per, no?
Not old business.
Okay.
I regret neglecting to mention, because our teachers and students have put a lot of time into it, that we have a Discovery Expo coming up this weekend, and I appreciate Ms. Sobel for nudging me and reminding me to share that, because 10 o'clock to about 1 o'clock at the high school in the cafeteria and commons, it can get pretty big, there are a lot of- There are a lot of outstanding presentations there. Our kids who have unique projects to share come and demonstrate what they work on, what their passion projects are, and oftentimes they get support from our staff. And we also will have presentations on various technologies available for parents, including like how to navigate Power School to other things that are, you know, more instructionally related. I encourage anybody to come and check it out. There is information on our website, so we hope to see you there.
And if the video for that is any indication, it's going to be very interesting. The video for it is wonderful.
Thank you. I didn't see the video, but I will go look for it now. But I have been the past couple of years to the expo and it's always fun and entertaining and always amazing.
Thank you. The chair has no new business. Does any board member have any new business?
I'm going to ask Adam to help me on this one, because we've been batting around an idea, really no action. Let me try to phrase what I'm thinking, but I'm asking the board essentially to think about and start looking into either forming a committee or a subcommittee. And there's various ways of doing this, but simply to focus on the topic of school safety and school climate. And Catherine and I said in a meeting with Tom YPTA a few weeks ago, where our YPTA president was asking, hey, you know, where do kids go if they want to report an incident? You know, what's the best way to reach someone? Jeff has some great ideas and a toll-free number. We have, we have school safety committees that operate, you know, to help implement the security plan, which we can never get into all the detail for security reasons. But we often get asked questions of, you know, what's going on there? How much progress is being made? You know, a year ago, we had a public meeting to go through security concerns where parents showed up. The Cheshire High School had a great forum and, you know, soon they'll be asking, hey, you know, so how are we making out in there? What's the next major project on security? We heard the superintendent talk earlier about incident management, tactical responses, and there's a lot of work he's doing on that. I know you want to go more detail. But what I'm going with this is, we talk about these things in various committees when they present themselves, but all the incidents that have been happening in and around Cheshire with bullying, the suicides, there's been an increased, at least for me, group of parents asking, not so much what is Cheshire doing? I think folks are comfortable that we're trying to address things, but for example, what's going on? You know, what incidents are happening? We're not getting into student detail. And for me, what drove the, drove at home was when we had the budget meeting a while back, seems like a while back, but back in January, Tracy Huss and her team did a great presentation where they listed out for the Board of Ed, you know, essentially incidents, suicidal risk assessments year-to-date by school, basically trying to quantify what's happening by school in terms of mental health, intervention, you know, bullying incidents, of course, without ever getting into student detail information. But I found this very powerful, as I think it helped the board also, you know, advocate for additional psychologists. But I just feel that it's time for the board to come up with a dedicated body or committee or some avenue, which I hope we look into, that we can have dedicated meeting and focus on these topics and also give, be an avenue for parents, teachers, whomever, that maybe want to come to a smaller setting and hear this information and possibly get some feedback, ways to improve without necessarily coming to a big meeting like this. So I, to me, it's a way of doing a community outreach in a way. Publishing, or at least publicizing what we're actually doing in the school district. Because I feel a lot of that information, while we talk about it at board meetings and you may be able to find the minutes, I think there's a tremendous appetite out there where if we can do a more intimate setting with the public and go through these things, talk about what we're doing and the effect it's having and hear their feedback, I think it would help ease a lot of angst on, you know, what we're actually trying to do amongst school climate and safety. Now, this is just a, you know, it's, it's a raw idea at this point. I will tell you that I have been talking to some of our legislators, let us represent it, I should say, and, you know, I got a feeling that at some point this is probably going to be mandated, that the Boards of Ed will need to meet routinely to review school safety climate. Whether that happens or not, I'm not going to be reactive, but, but being proactive, I think it's also going to help us as another data point or points per se, avenue to collect information, see how our policies are actually working. So I point to Adam because I know I've been talking to him about it. I, we wasn't ready to go into a lot of detail, but I want to throw it out there. I think it's something that might benefit us and of course, looking for the whole board to weigh in on this and come up with ideas and see how we can do this in a meaningful manner. But having said that, I'm going to defer to you what your thoughts are and maybe do a little more justice to this idea.
Mr. Grippo.
Thank you for the recognition. As we were talking about decorum and all that, right? Yeah, I just wanted to echo what Mr. Perugini said. We had been talking about kind of the detail as to sort of what kind of information that the administration could report to us in a public way without endangering, you know, anyone's identity or, or putting us in any kind of jeopardy in any way. But there is, like Tony said, an appetite out there for, to know what's, what's happening for our, for our school climate and safety. And we have levers in place or reporting in place that, that isn't usually, it's reported to us, but not sometimes publicly disseminated. And I think having a new subcommittee would be a great way to aggregate that information in a way where it can be reported on a regular basis. I don't know if monthly is probably too much, but perhaps on a quarterly basis. And then that the, we could present that in a way where the public can come and comment or voice additional concerns and to kind of help us shape policy moving forward. So that was just sort of our idea and we weren't sure. And we know that, you know, that it's really, I think, the chairman's prerogative or chairman's power to, so I guess create, because I don't know if a motion would be necessary, but normally the chairman can sort of just create a subcommittee if need be.
Yeah, we'll have to go through the mechanics. We've had subcommittees in the past and various things, you know, but even before we get there, I just, we want to put it out there. And this is by no means saying that, you know, if you're in the school system, whether you're a parent, student, a teacher, administrator, you know, there are so many other avenues to go to get information. There's PTAs, you know, there's dedicated meetings in schools with parents to go over some things. But there seems to be just one area that, you know, I think would be just another avenue for folks to hear what's going on and one setting we could dedicate to, whether it's an hour or two hours, and focus on the topics, which we can't normally do in a board meeting. It takes up too much time. But the mechanics of how we do this, I'm not sure. I'm not even sure it's an actual committee, an informational committee of the board, but something that we can focus on, school climate issues, trends, metrics, and, you know, at least get the public another avenue to see what's going on. I mean, we'll, go ahead, Nina.
So I thought, see, we did establish the school, I think we've had them, but we do have school safety committees in each school. And I know in policy last year, we spent a lot of time after the Parkhurst incident, we spent a lot, at what? It was, it was Parkhurst, right? Yeah. And then we had that big, Parkland, sorry, Parkland. Sorry, oh, Parker, oh, what was his name?
That's why I was confused.
I'm tired tonight, Parkland, I'm sorry. That we had the big, you know, we had, we made it a priority to make sure that the school safety committees were in place. So I think each school does have one and there were supposed to be reporting requirements. It was supposed to be a community of, or the school safety community, committee was supposed to be comprised of, I think, a parent, a teacher, like different stakeholders. And then that safety committee was supposed to then have minutes and report back to the district committee and the district committee was going to report back to us. I think that's how it was supposed to work. So I think there is something in place already, I think, that we established it and I don't know if we need to just revisit that to make sure it's.
I think we should, but that's not where I was going with this. But that's definitely helpful because I think that would be one input to this group. But right now, the Board of Ed doesn't have any insight into what these city committees are doing. And that's actually intentional because there's some very detailed things that are taught about there that for security reasons and others, we would probably not want to know. But to me, whether it's that district group reporting to the board or to a dedicated subcommittee, one of my thoughts was get those metrics in there that way as well, in addition to the things that Tracy reports. But thank you for bringing that up. I almost forgot to mention that.
Okay. So I want to make a distinction between, because I think, I think it's easier to think about in terms of, there's school safety, which is like the physical plant and, you know, those things that we're doing to increase the shell? I don't know what the right, you know?
Hardening of the facilities.
Hardening of the facilities, thank you. And I think we don't necessarily, to have that be a topic of conversation may not be effective because of the fact that we are, we have very little that we can, we may have very little.
Yeah, and if I wasn't clear, I'm not advocating for that.
Right. So, but I think what I'm hearing more of is the school climate. Okay. So in that case, you know, if what we're thinking about is putting together a subcommittee that is, you know, sort of focused on that and can, I guess, get some level of, you know, quarterly reporting, that's fine. Again, I, my concern is with respect to sort of having that be something that the public engages with us on. And I don't mean to say, I mean, it would be informational to the public.
Yes, like our committee meeting.
People are going to be wanting the details that we cannot share and that may end up being more frustrating.
Well, again, so if you heard what I said, we're not going to share details that we can't share, but things like, things like, you know, things like this.
True.
Which they haven't seen and if they hear us talking about it and, you know, but I'm not saying that we engage input. It would be a committee meeting where, you know, public's always welcome, right? If there's an audience session, that's great. But no, I'm not saying we get into details of Sally versus Johnny or anything like that, but.
I understand, right.
So hopefully, I mean, to confuse you on that, but.
No, I wasn't, I didn't think that that's what you were suggesting. What I was trying to say was, you know, that kind of information, while it is, that's good information, may not be enough for people sitting in the audience. That may just be, okay, well, but what happened after that and what did we do about everything? And those are the kinds of things that we will not be able to respond to.
Well, actually, that's true. Not in any detail, but I will say that what Jeff has been doing at Tom YPTA, so like, and we were there at night when the lean-in team was there. So, you know, he went into details about the idea of a toll-free hotline that might be, you know, manned, things like that in nature. Again, to me, this is just a, again, I'm looking to the rest of the board to consider this, you know, see if it's a good idea or not, think about it. There's probably things that we want to focus on or not do, but at the end of the day, I just, I think there's definitely an appetite out there. And, you know, as a way to share information in a consolidated format in this topic, that might, you know, be the avenue to plug the hole and to gather information there. So again, I wish I had more detail, but just trying to formulate it. I know Lynn's been anxious to say something.
No, that's fine. Ms. Sobel, did you want to jump in and?
Oh, well, I was going to. No, that's okay. What I was, what I was going to say is that I think that's a really good idea, but we should figure out the details of it, not necessarily in a, not in a public forum. But the way that I was looking at it, when you were talking about it, was that it would be more informational, not specific to, to, to instances that we do, yet the procedure and the processes that we have in place. So it would be more of an overview?
An overview, but also.
Can I finish?
I'm sorry, Marlena.
Thank you.
I don't mean to do that, go ahead.
Can? Okay.
Yes, ma'am, sure.
Yeah, I was thinking of it as, as more of an overview of everything, not everything, but instances. That way we stay away from things like privacy, we stay away from a lot of the details that, that the administrators get that frankly cannot be, and we don't know what the details are, but to just sort of explain the process. But detail should be worked out at another time.
Mr. Perugini?
So I'm going to apologize if I was not clear, but I'm going to say it again. I am not advocating that we share any person, and Jeff knows I talked to him about this. I'm not advocating what really is worried about at all. What I am advocating is there's nothing wrong with this information that we make public, that when I point to, you people honestly have no idea what I'm talking about. And again, it's, it's good to see that there's trends increasing, decreasing. It's more public information, it's not to engage the community in debates, but like any other committee or subcommittee informational meeting, I imagine, and I know parents will show up, set that point to hear what we're doing, you know, where I think they may not hear it because we cover it in bits and pieces in various committees and meetings, that's all this is. So thank you, and I share your concern, that's why I was trying to be very clear on what we're trying not to do. But again, I look to the full board members to help cultivate this and if it, you know, goes somewhere, great. If not, we'll talk about it.
Ms. Harrigan.
That it seems to me that if we are going to talk, and I'm happy to do that another time and not tonight at the meeting, but I, I think that our earlier discussions on sleep-deprived students, adolescents and teenagers and school start times is going to fall under that, in that area as well. And so I think there's a way to combine some of these initiatives that several of us are interested in looking at.
I just have one question for the superintendent. The school climate survey that is being taken now, will you have the results of that before the next business meeting, do you think?
Yes. Yeah. The next meeting we have is early March. I want to say it's the fifth or the eighth. It's, that's not a business meeting, that's the middle school showcase. Excuse me, the subsequent meeting, yes.
So I think, Tony, that that will be, help us, the results of that may be helpful in, in helping us figure out how we want to approach this. But so, yeah, I mean, this will be on the agenda for that.
I apologize, I'm not trying to have a discussion about it tonight, I just want to put the idea out there, just so that we can plant the seed and see where it goes.
Yep.
But I do agree with you, I did have a school climate survey in mind as well. So thank you for bringing that up.
Okay. Good point. Anyone else have anything? Mr. Grippo.
I don't know if it's in order to make a motion at this time, because I know it wasn't on the agenda, but I know that the K. Representative kind of gave me an idea. So I'll just put it out there, you just shoot it down if you want, that on March first, I believe there's going to be testimony on forced regionalization of school districts. And I was wondering if we could make a motion, because she suggested that we could submit testimony as a, as a board, if we can make a motion to vigorously oppose it and enter that into, into the record.
So I think what she, she was talking about adopting a resolution, that the board would adopt a resolution? I'm not sure what the procedure is for that?
Yeah, I don't think it would be appropriate to do it tonight, not being on the agenda. I support that. I think, given the timeframe, two, we have two options. We could hold a special meeting of the board or we could submit testimony. And, you know, I'm more than happy to provide you a template, board members a template for submitting that testimony and you can express, so either way, I think those would probably be the two most appropriate avenues, but.
Ma'am Chair.
No, I just wondered if you thought, Jeff, one would be more effective than the other in terms of impact? So if it would be more impactful to have a resolution of the board, then, you know, it would probably be worth scheduling a special meeting for that. But Mr. Perugini has something to say.
This may help, may not help. I, I thank you, Anna, for bringing this up. I'm talking to someone today about the regionalization, which, you know, unfortunately, you know, it's not on our agenda. This is new business that's, that's maybe hitting all school districts in Connecticut, so it may be on our agenda very soon. I mean, I don't think we're ready to have a motion on this. I think, you know, technically we could have a two-thirds of the vote of the board and add to the agenda, but I think there needs to be some discussion amongst us, the board. But I fully get behind not adopt, I mean, just, I know, I wasn't saying I'm telling you how you really feel about it, but I know your, know the details of what's being out there right now. I can't support it. So I think somehow, even if it's a gesture, you know, to support the board, you know, is not behind us at this time, it does speak volumes. But I am anxious to get that template, because I will definitely submit it to a number of folks. I think that's a great step, but it'd be nice to get on record soon where the board stances on this, once we have a chance to have a more in-depth discussion on it.
The question is if we could submit it as group testimony, I, I think I would have to clear that with Patrice. I mean, I can talk to her too about what our options are.
If we're all going to be submitting the same, I'm sorry, I don't even know which way, the same statement, it kind of loses a little bit of its.
way, the same statement, it kind of loses a little bit of its power.
Mine will be different, you know, I'll try to constrain myself, but.
That's what I mean about, like, I could provide a template with talking points, and you could do your own, or I could talk to Patrice about, you know, the protocol for either scheduling a special meeting, even if it's a five-minute meeting, to just adopt it at, you know, 7:30 in the morning or something before people go to work, that's fine too.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you also find out, it's my understanding that there's more than one.
Proposal.
Proposal.
Yeah, the, the proposal, the initial proposal was a.
The devil's in the detail, so to speak.
Yeah, there was a proposed bill that talked about regionalization along the lines of probate court regionalization, and that would, in effect, blend us with Southington. We would become a joint school system. You know, I, I think if we're going to go down that road, you know, would state legislature be, follow the same thing, would we just have one represent? That would reduce costs too. So, you know, that's, that's one proposal. And another proposal was to blend districts that had less than 10,000 people in terms of the general population and less than, was it 1,000 or 2,000, 2,000 students, and three schools or less. So that was another proposal that had come out. So there are definitely multiple ideas on the table. People I talked to in our community don't support any of them necessarily, even though the second one doesn't impact us, but I'll talk to Patrice tomorrow and try and get some guidance about, I, I understand that there are strong feelings here, and let's just determine what our options are, and I can communicate that out.
Good. Yes?
I have one more issue, but it's not related to this.
Another piece of new business?
Yes.
Okay, go.
Okay. This last part, I wasn't sure, like, what part of the meeting this would be appropriate to, to enter into a discussion, but over the last several weeks, many of us have been involved in different discussions. We've been approached by many different people on many different things, and I'm being very general, because we can't really say what any of those are. And, you know, I've gone through our bylaws to really sort of establish, you know, what, what I can personally do, what this board can personally do about any of these issues that are being brought to us. And it, at the end of the day, and it really comes down to, like, the woman from Cave said, you know, the Board of Education is responsible for policy, but the superintendent is responsible for everything else and responsible for administration. And I know that the things that we've been discussing are, have come to a boil. There are a lot of issues out there that, it's almost like a, like a 30-headed monster that, that's out there, you know, hitting your office all at the same time, Jeff. But at the same time, I'm, I'm at a loss as to how to achieve resolution to these, these, some of these people who appear to be very, almost desperate to achieve resolution. And I'm not really sure who to hold accountable for it. The bylaws tell me that the only person that the board can hold accountable is you. And so I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is that I'm going to be checking in with the people who contact me, and I know that there are other board members who have been contacted with other issues, and that I hope that a lot of the, the issues that have been brought up to us, who, who these people feel are very, very serious about, that I know that I'll be using them as, as a guidepost when we look at your evaluation come June. And I just, I feel that there are a lot of things that have been happening that are very serious, and that a lot of people feel very serious about them, and that there's a lot of resolu, there's a lot of problems that have, have not been resolved. And so I just wanted to publicly say that, I guess, the only person that I can hold accountable is you. And so I hope that there are things that can be achieved without any unpleasantness, I guess. So, and that's just me, because I know as a board, as an individual board member, I can't act alone in anything. That's been made very clear. And so I'm, I'm at the end of, at the end of my avenues of, of being able to do anything. So I, I just wanted to say that, you know, I like you personally, I think over the last year and a half, that we, we've gotten along pretty well, and I just wanted, just wanted to say that I hope that the issues that are out there can be solved. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may.
You may.
I would just hope those issues get brought, brought to me, Adam. You know, because I can't resolve something if I don't know about it, and I'm happy to work on anything that comes forward, as we usually do. I'm really proud of the team that we have and the work that we do and the opportunities we provide for our kids, and so if something comes up, I'm more than happy to address it.
If I can, ma'am, if I can add. So we have talked to you about a couple things, Jeff, in your office, and so I know for the crowd out there, it's, it's, it's hard to make sense of this, but, you know, sometimes board members get approached by various parents about some things they see in the system or ideas or whatever, and want some anonymity, but so what we all do, and what Patrice talked about earlier, is, you know, we go through the process of, did you talk to the teacher? Did you talk to the principal? Did you talk to the administrator? Did you talk to the super? Or we can walk them over to the super if we have to. But, you know, I think, so, you know, I hear things too, I hear them from time to time. But absolutely, you know, we're sending, if they appear, we send them your way. You know, that's pretty much all we can do. So, you know, and I know as things get worked on, you know, we'll, we'll probably get updates, but you're aware of some of the things, but we're hopeful that, you know, folks will follow the path we've given them and come see you. Thank you.
I, I'm not sure that this was the forum to, to raise that, and I hope though that you, when you are speaking to parents, are in fact explaining to them what the procedure is for getting their complaints resolved, which I'm sure you are doing. And then, you know, if there's somebody who feels that they need to get, you know, go up the ranks, and you know, you direct them to the superintendent's solen, that's, that is the only thing that we can do. We cannot solve problems for parents. But I think that it is not, it's not appropriate to raise the superintendent's evaluation during this public meeting. And so I would suggest that we not go into that kind of thing right now, and, you know, just encourage people to follow the path that is set out for people that have concerns and problems in the school system. So with that, I am going to read the upcoming Board of Education meetings.
Can I respond to that, or?
Uh, no.
Okay.
I'd appreciate it if we could just wrap this up.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, it's your prerogative.
Thank you. Upcoming Board of Education meetings, Monday, March 4th is, at 6:30 PM, is a policy committee meeting at the Humiston Boardroom. Thursday, March 7th, at 7:30 PM, Middle School Showcase will be at Dodd Middle School. Monday, March 11th, at 7:00 PM, will be the Curriculum Committee meeting at the Humiston Boardroom. Thursday, March 21st, 7:30 PM, will be our next business, Board of Education Business Meeting here at Town Hall, Town Council Chambers. And on March 15th, 2019, is Professional Development Day, No School for Students. With that, can I have a motion to adjourn? Ms. Sobel may have a second. Ms. Harrigan, all in favor? Thank you, it's unanimous.